Well, good evening, everyone. I guess I could come off mute. That would help. Everybody's having an enjoyable evening. Welcome to our June 1st. Are we at June already here? Oh, my goodness. June 1st, board meeting, I think May was about six months long, so hopefully June won't be quite as taxing on us here, but thanks, thanks, everybody for joining us. Real quick, I'm going to do a quick roll call before we move on, just to make sure all the board members are here. Director Stauffer.
Yes, President, thank you.
Director Jeffries. I think I see you there. You might be muted. About Director Koo.
Hey, good evening.
And Vice Chair Pickens.
Hello, good evening.
All right, and I see Director Jeffries out there, so just didn't hear him. So, all right, while we, so we can get on with our proceedings here. Let's all stand and join in our pledge of allegiance.
All right, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Okay, so just a couple of things, reminder that we are still under restricted OPMA rules, and then we are also under our virtual meeting guidelines, and so we will not be taking public comments verbally. Any written comments can be directed in for future, for future board meetings. Also, if everybody could make sure that you have your mic muted, and that that includes us as board members as when we're not talking, so that way there's no background noise and we don't get feedback. And just a reminder also that the meeting is also being recorded. So those are our protocol for our, for our current meeting and see Deck, Director, Director Koo, how about a leading off for our vision and mission statement for us?
All right, you got it, boss. Our vision statement for the Squim School District is our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. Our mission is in accordance, in connection with our community, the Squim School District empowers staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment, so each student thrives.
All right, thank you for sharing that with us. Okay. So, leading off, first thing we have today is we have an annual health report from our own district nurse, Sonia Bittner. So Ms. Bittner, we welcome you to, to join us and share your report with us. Looking forward to it.
Hi, thank you, board. I think you can both see and hear me. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yep, we sure can.
It's always doing different, and I guess this is the one time you say, well, change is the only constant. So I am happy to be here, though, tonight to give you my annual report. The year was a little short, but full nonetheless. And I say that slightly tongue in cheek. I'm going to go ahead and go straight off the presentation that I sent Tracy. Tracy, if you want to put that up, I'm not going to actually read off of it, so there might be information there that our board can read in the background while I talk. Thank you. So I'll just go ahead and start, though. We have now, believe it or not, five Health Services staff. The newest member of our Health Services staff is actually a previous Health Services member. She was our Gray Wolf Health Clerk, and she's come back part-time at Haller. She's completing four hours there, which allows for coverage for procedures at OPA. And additionally, it allows us to cover the lunchtime at Haller, which is very important with diabetic students there. Going on, I'll go ahead and go to under policy 3410, is it 10? Yeah, 3410. Our school vision and hearing screening, I'm sorry, Tracy? Is Tracy there?
Hi, Sonia, I am. I am trying to find, it looks like those are the only two that I found, so I'm searching as you speak.
It's a multiple-page one labeled June 2020 Board Presentation. And the other one I sent you was the Certificate of Immunization.
I have the certificate and I have the pandemic flu. I'm missing that third one. Oh, there, hang on.
Okay.
There we go. Health Services Board, that's the one.
Okay, so we've scrolled down to the vision and hearing, and you folks have already heard me about this subject, a bit on this subject, because earlier this year, David Blakesley wanted me to come and help him out as he presented. You know, this turned into a surprising and really productive year in regard to vision screening. Last year, if you recall, the year before, the state changed the rules regarding vision screening and included near-distance screening. So before that, we only did far distance, and what they wanted to see was students proving they could read, reading distance, which was, which was great, and we caught a lot of new referrals for students who weren't able to see well up close. But the difficulty with the vision screening instrument and those requirements is that when you look in a vision screening instrument, there's a certain amount of performance involved in passing or failing that vision screening test, and I found that there were quite a few children that, that really couldn't perform the screening, even though we use LEA symbols, which is, you know, a house, square, circle, a heart. Those for the younger grades, they don't have to know their letters. All the way through the third grade, actually, we still had students that, because they were wearing glasses, couldn't focus well inside the machine, or for some other reason, their eyes didn't work well together enough, which was certainly a reason to refer them on for screening, but the Lions approached me last fall to use the Plus Optic Screener, which not only screens for near point and distance, but additionally picks up seven other eye diseases that can easily go undiagnosed for many years. So I actually thought that we would have quite a few more referrals based on using the Plus Optic Screener, because there's a certain learning curve the first time that's done, and we did have a few more referrals. You can see my highlighted area there. We had 163 referrals. Of course, we screened K, 1, 2, 3, 5, and 7, and these, these results only reflect grade school, not middle school. The reason was we weren't able to use the Plus Optic Screener on the seventh graders, and I'll explain why in just a minute. But the Lions had worked with the state previously, so that the wax allowed for this screening device. I have to confess, I was not all for it in the beginning, and David kind of talked me into giving it a try. I'm really glad he did. We significantly decreased lost seat time. The teachers were really appreciative of this new way of screening, because they felt it went very quickly. I think we were able to screen groups of students we previously hadn't been able to screen well, because all the student had to do was focus momentarily on the camera, and so many of our Living Skills students were able to be screened this year, and that was a real bonus. So, and the Lions made this available to us for free. The real difficulty there was trying to get them into the school schedule for the screening and at a time when the screeners that they were borrowing were available. So the Lions went ahead and applied for a grant to purchase their own screeners this year. They're hoping to convince the Port Angeles School District to also do this, but they were not really willing to this year. So I did write a letter in support of that grant, and I presented to the Lions Club in February. I think it went really well, and I'm looking forward to using their services again in the future. So to finish up, vision screening, we did, of course, do the hearing screening as well, and the Lions Club volunteered to do that as well, but they were going to use the exact same hearing screening machines that the school uses, and I opted not to have them help with the screening, because the one really great thing about screening, it's a lot of work, it takes a lot of time, but it allows me to lay eyes on every single student. And even in a very short period of time, interacting with them for less than a minute, you learn a lot about student needs, and so I mostly kept the hearing screening in my court, because I was unwilling to give up seeing however many that was, 963 students in the fall, and so also because their screener wasn't available for the seventh graders, we went ahead and screened those the usual way, too. So I'd like to, I know that you're all probably muted, but if there's any questions about a specific segment that I'm covering, it's probably easier to just go ahead and ask me during this segment rather than save them for the end. So is there any questions about that?
I don't have any here, but I'll, I'll open it up to the board there.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Director Jeffries. Tell me more about these new people you have on staff that can help with medical, that you said five new people?
Well, no, they're not all new. We have
Five people that can help with the schools?
Yes, we have a health clerk in every health room, and the Squim School District is unique in that way. I frequently meet with school nurses from other schools, and they are not as lucky as we are. So to have a full-time health clerk in every health room means that we can address student needs. Now, my health clerks can't assess students, but they certainly end up being my eyes and ears, and it allows this district to just have one school nurse. Otherwise, according to the Washington State Health Department, we turn in a district assessment to them every year. There's an algorithm for how many nurses this school district would really otherwise need, and, you know, it actually comes out to two and a half, so there need to be another nurse and a half if we didn't have such great health clerks in our health rooms. It's truly a team effort. So in addition to the health clerk in each of the health rooms at Haller, Gray Wolf Middle School and High School, we additionally this year have some students with medical needs at OPA. So we weren't able to meet those needs on a daily basis for the procedure that needed to occur there every day. And we weren't able to cover for our diabetic students during the lunch hour at Haller without additional health room hours. So Cassie Cobb is the one new health clerk. She's not new to Health Services, but she's back after having had a baby, and she does just four hours a day at Haller, in addition to the other health clerks doing their full-time duties.
And I guess I partially ask that question with an eye to the future. I don't know what our needs are going to be until whatever the new pandemic school is going to look like, but I imagine we're going to need some kind of health contact in every building, and hopefully, and I don't know how much, you know, what it's going to take to make sure that we have that. Is this a start, or are these people in those plans, you think?
You know, I'm just happy to reassure you that we actually have the staff we need in place now, and they are all experienced and trained.
That's, that's great. Thank you.
I'm happy about that, too, believe me. Okay, so I'll move on to student immunizations. As usual, we chase student immunizations, and we've been hearing through the changes that the state has made over the last few years, that we're going to see some pretty big changes, and the 2021 school year is the year of the big change. If I could put it in a nutshell for you, this is the year that parents will no longer, in any format, be able to validate their children's immunizations. So in previous years, the parents sign the form, the state form, it's called the Certificate of Immunization Status, the CIS. A parent filled it in with their students' immunizations and signed it and provided it to the school, and that was verified immunizations. Now, last year, I thought we were going to see a lot more noncompliant students because of the new laws for the MMR vaccine, the measles, mumps, and rubella. The state took away the option of having a personal exemption. So if a student didn't get the MMR, it now has to be a medical exemption, signed by the medical practitioner, or a religious, a religious exemption. Up until now, parents were able to say, no, I don't feel like getting that. So that was a big change last year. We did a complete immunization review of every immunization chart in the whole school, and I thought we were going to have worse numbers, but actually, I'm happy to say we only have a 6% noncompliance rate this year, and that's unheard of, low numbers for a school district. Artis Mangano, she's the Health Services Specialist. She spends a great deal of her time on the immunizations. I'm so thankful for her efforts and the efforts of all the health clerks, because they, too, went through all the, all the immunization reports we had. Now, the big change this year, and if I could have Tracy, could I have you put the new CIS form on the screen? The big change this year is that a parent can no longer sign to verify their students' immunizations. So as you see, this is a copy of the new Certificate of Immunization Status. The student's name goes at the top, and then there's two signature portions below that. On the old one, one of those was a parent's signature saying, oh, this is my student's immunizations. I've verified them. Now it's changed, and the signature at the top is basically allowing us, the one on the left there with the cursor, it's allowing us to put these immunizations on the state site. The state has a site called the WIS, Washington Immunization Information System, and that's been running for about 15 years, but it's not until about the last five years that private doctors have started putting a lot of their students' immunizations in there, before it was really just the Department of Health. Well, so now, the new, the new future is, is that verification of immunizations has only, there are only three options for that. One is that we print them off state from, right from the state site, from WAIS. We go there, we log on and print them directly from that site. The second is, is that the parent can write them in, and the doctor can sign at the bottom. There's a provider signature portion to verify that those are the vaccines, or we can take them directly from a student's medical records. So a doctor can send us a copy of the student's medical immunization record, and we can use that. But this, you know, this is a really big change for the state to say parents no longer can verify any immunization. So once again, I thought our noncompliance rate would be really high this year, but it wasn't, and I'm in hopes that our noncompliance rate next year won't reflect this change too terribly, although I wouldn't be surprised if it did. All this current students' immunizations are grandfathered in. We don't need to go back and have a medical verification of students that, you know, have been here for 12 years. It's only new students coming in that will have to meet these requirements, reenrollments, or new transfers into our district. So the only other part of this is that with the MMR, I'll go back to that subject a little bit. I met with Dr., oh, why can't I say his name right now? Jonathan Freezer, yeah, Dr. Freezer, I'm sorry. He's kind of my liaison with OMC's pediatric department, and we were having a little bit of a conflict about how the doctors were signing the medical exemption for students with MMRs. Some doctors were signing it to say they had reviewed all the risks with the parents, and they were choosing not to immunize, but they were really going to a true medical exemption. So doctors will sign a medical exemption, say, if the student has a medical reason that it is not safe for them to receive that vaccine, because it is a live vaccine. Unlike the flu vaccine, which is a killed virus, the MMR is a live attenuated virus, and it, you know, it's not safe for everybody. And I just want to bring up again, there's a big difference between being noncompliant with state regulations, which means you don't have in place what the law says has to be in place, and a student who is exempt from the vaccine. They can be exempt from a vaccine and still be compliant, because the state allows for exemptions. So is there any question about immunizations? I guess I would add one thing is that Artis Mangano, and she's, you know, she's my secretary, for lack of a better name for her. She's my coworker in Health Services. She, I, and Cassie are now all signed up to be logged, we're all logged on to the school module for the Washington State Immunization System. By being logged on to the school module, we can now input immunization information to help update a child's records in that, and we can also use a roster from that to submit our annual immunization report, and Dr. Unthank and I both feel that the school module will put an end to the reports from the state that Squim hasn't, hasn't sent theirs in. So it puts us all on the same page, which is a great way to be organized.
All right, any questions out there from the board? Sounds like, sounds like not this time. You, you're welcome to keep going on.
Okay, well, now, next, we'll talk about infectious disease. That's, you know, big on everybody's mind these days. Ultimately, though, the OSPI has not changed their original guide from 2014 in regard to how Health Services deals with infectious disease at school. Of course, we have the Notifiable Conditions Report from the State Health Department that we also adhere to. The only change in school health regarding the previous guidelines is that there is now no longer a head lice policy. So I think that in the fall, that created quite the stir. It was WASDA that said that there wasn't one anymore, and that we wouldn't have one any longer in our policies and procedures. And I think that that worried people in regard to the fact that they thought we would no longer be addressing head lice, and I just want to say that is not the case. In fact, it may not be a policy, but nothing has changed for Health Services. We still check for lice, we still call parents, we still case manage to check for NITS and help parents, you know, treat their children's lice, phone calls home and follow-up on a daily basis until there's no sign anymore of any NITS. So I think it's, the best way for me to have addressed that was I made a lot of phone calls home, because we had a lot of parents calling, and it was easier just to talk each parent through the process, so that most of them were reassured that it didn't mean we were not going to be addressing lice anymore, that we just did not have a specific policy for one, as per the state. So regarding flu and illness, I think it was surprising to everybody that we had such high flu rates last November. So when the notice came out about the COVID, we did not have high rates at all. In fact, they were very, very low in all the schools. I accidentally misreported for the high school at one point in March. The attendance secretary was pulling numbers a little differently than we were used to, but still, well below 6%, well below 5% out sick in March. It was in November that when the illness rate is over 10%, is 10% or more out, I do call the Health Department and report it. I think we're going to see a change on that, because the Health Department doesn't act on that as a rule. So that'll be one of the changes I expect to see some guidelines from, from the Department of Health regarding at what point we, we report flu and what our actions in response to that would be. So every, when, last November, when we were getting such high illness rates in all of the schools, except the middle school, I believe, you know, there's a set of actions I followed, and that was based on our pandemic flu plan. The CDC came out with that in 2017 and suggested all schools put together a flu plan and practice following it every year. So I'd been practicing, and we practiced in November, and the, the list here, we practiced by sending out the newsletter notices, we were posting the OSHA quick card publications in the staff lounges, we were getting information to parents when to keep your child home from school. All of these items are included in the flu plan. And then in February, when I started seeing information about the COVID, I did do what I called the Pandemic Flu Plan for District Health Rooms to help all of the health rooms respond in the safest possible way to, you know, student illness, and especially to risk for the flu, and I included that information here. It was all part of our flu plan, but you know, the health rooms are frequently used for short naps at the elementary level, students who are crying. There's any number of other reasons health rooms were used, but in February and March, I specifically said unless a student is injured and needs to be in the health room, that we weren't using those health rooms for anything but student illness. And I don't know what things helped, if any, or if it was just the fact that we didn't seem to have any flu hitting the school in March, but I do feel like having those things in place and having the health rooms practice them all early in the year will bode well for us come fall. So in addition, thrown in there, you know, every year we do the district assessment for the state, and even though the year was short, the numbers reflected that we had 8,735 health room visits this year, and 92% of kids were returned to class. So the district assessment also has us putting together numbers for the life-threatening health conditions that the school manages every year, and this year, 1,297 health, student health conditions, 189 of them life-threatening with an emergency medication, and 246 care plans for student in the district healthcare plans. One thing that I think will put us ahead also in the coming year, and what, the reason I say put us ahead is because it's always better to be prepared, especially when you don't know what's going to happen. And how do you prepare for not knowing what's going to happen? I think that a really well-fleshed-out training program is probably one of the best things we do. And so this year, I did include the training program that I do special trainings every year for special education, for the custodians, maintenance department. I usually also eat, meet with the parent educators, and then specifically, the Health Services staff has quite a bit of training. So all of our health clerks are not only experienced at their jobs, but they've all had all of this training that you see listed here every year at school. They all train for the diabetic students to assist them. It's called a parent-designated adult. They do that every year, even if they don't have a diabetic student. So we did that last year. And then the newest training we implemented this fall was also, was seizure training, because we have students with seizures who take nasal midazolam, and in order for nonlicensed personnel to be able to give that emergency medication, they have to go through a training program. So actually, the auntie of one of our Living Skills students at the high school is a teacher at Washington State University in Spokane, nursing teacher, is a teacher at Washington State University in Spokane, nursing teacher. And we worked together for a year and came up with a training program. And she came last August and trained all the health services staff. And we now have them all certified as PDAs for seizure students who get nasal midazolam. And I'm going to pause again for any questions there.
Okay, thank you. I'll again, open that up to the board floor.
Go Coups!
Okay, good deal. So I'll move on.
Director Jeffries has got something there.
Okay.
This is Director Jeffries again. One of my big concerns is the pandemic and planning for the pandemic. And I know, like you said, we don't know, we don't know what it's going to look like or what it's going to be. However, there's some pretty strong indications coming down from Washington Department of Health, the CDC. Pretty soon, OSPI will be publishing reopening schools. And I imagine there'll be a lot of medical pandemic controls we need to put in place. Are you, you have a good sense of where we're headed with that? Are you and your public health professionals trying to stay one step ahead of it so you're not caught black floated?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. So we do have the pandemic flu plan and I did actually send that out to Tracy. It was last updated in March. Of course, there's been no updates since then because we were on a stay-at-home order. But I'm glad you asked because what I have done is continue to follow all of the state's most stringent recommendations. Those are coming out for daycares. Now, I know the school is not a daycare, but if we can completely meet all of the recommendations for the daycare, which are the most stringent ones, I do feel that we can then be more prepared to meet them for school. So I've reviewed the Washington State Department of Health. It's a three-page checklist for daycare. I reviewed the, what was that that came out specifically? The National Nurses Association also came out with a big checklist. WASA came out with some recommendations. And if we meet the most stringent of those in whatever format school is once again opened with, then I think that we can meet the student health needs. Whether that means having a parent educator on every bus with a no-touch thermometer, having two posted at each entrance of the school for temperatures upon entry of school each day. Of course, I have come up with a quick list for some of the supplies we might need for the school in hopes of getting those and have forwarded those to our superintendent. And we have a new list of PPEs for the health room clerks. I think based on those, I feel like I'm ready to at least, yeah, I'm ready. How do I say that? Bring it, bring it on, state, tell me what you need. I think right now the lack of personal protective equipment is one of the biggest concerns. One of the other biggest concerns is right now, King County is actually recommending that students or children under the age of 12 not wear a mask unless they are with an adult or guardian to help them manage that mask use. And the reason is because whenever you touch a mask when you're wearing it, you've essentially created more of a problem than if you weren't wearing a mask at all. And social distancing still trumps wearing a mask. So there are a few things, I'm really going to wait to hear what the state says. I've been in touch with Mary Budke at the Boys and Girls Club. In fact, health services is there every morning from 7:45 to 9:00, taking temperatures of the kids. So, you know, we've been continuing on volunteering that way. And I've done a walk-through there to see how they were meeting the state standards. So I guess I do feel like I'm, I'm prepared. Also, I'm going to be on the task force that's going to start meeting tomorrow to discuss back-to-school plans.
That, that sounds, that sounds great. And I can't find the document, but I know someplace I read about the school openings, that schools needed to follow the childcare plan. Because essentially that's what we do. And please let us know, and I'm sure too, Dr. Clark, you're going to, you know, this may cost us some money to put in place. And I think hopefully we'll be able to support that. Because personally, I think the foundation of reopening school is a good, strong, robust, medically-approved pandemic plan and everything else comes after that.
Yeah, I absolutely feel like we can meet the standards that are set out right now for, for the childcare, you know, it's going to be interesting to see how some of the restrictions for case-managing flu play out, especially when they're saying that a child would need to be out at least three days fever-free, 10 days after the onset of symptoms, possibly 14 days if they've been exposed to anybody with COVID. And then I'm also seeing information reflected that they may need a doctor's note to come back. So all of the nuances regarding, regarding responding to student illness, certainly we can do those, we're well-staffed, like I said, and we're in a position to be able to do it. The only one thing we don't have in our health rooms is a negative pressure room. And I did talk to Dr. Clark about that. A negative pressure room is what they're suggesting for anybody who's coughing and feverish and showing symptoms because in negative pressure rooms, the air is sucked into the room and then filtered as it's let out. You know, we don't have that, but our health rooms are also not positive pressure rooms. There's no windows in the wall or any, or airflow through the health rooms, you know, they're, they're dead ends. So I, I think that being able to isolate students behind curtains and deal with the health rooms as an isolation space meets those requirements.
Sonia, this is Director Stauffer. Just want to thank you again for the thoroughness and it demonstrates that our kids are in the most safe hands. And thank you for your due diligence.
You're welcome. Is, is that okay? My time's up too?
Real, real quick, just the, the, the flu plan is attached to the agenda in board docs for, for, for board members to access.
Oh, good. Okay, good. It's somewhat informal in its layout because it was really just being used by health services. So you'll see notes on it, but I'm glad it's available for you. So how are we doing on time, Tracy? Do I need to wrap up before I get to the end or should I quickly move through the rest?
Director Gibson, I'm going to let you make that call.
I think we're good. We have, we have a pretty, we don't have a very impactful agenda from, for the evenings. This is probably the biggest thing we have to discuss, so the floor is yours still.
Okay, all right. So just a couple more things. Unfortunately, this year, I have to say, we saw a lot more students in the health rooms who were on drugs and alcohol from the sixth grade on up. And in order to address our policy, it's 2121P, I felt like more information was needed for both our administrators and the health room clerks. Just because we seem to be dealing with a lot of intoxicated students or concerns for drug use. So in addition to what we have in our policy, I've referred to the Washington State Department of Health's how to respond. And specifically, what is a mental health emergency? Because it's the only place in where they, the only place else where intoxication is addressed. So I wanted to make sure that the administrators and the health clerks knew that they could not assess students for drug use. You know, a lot of times the principals or vice principals might go to the health clerk and ask for their opinion on something. But legally, even though they work under my licensure, you know, they're not able to assess. And so I did make a lot of rounds to a lot of schools this year, checking on kids, and ended up with the bullet points there on the next page regarding drug and alcohol use. It's really important in a school setting that we address emergencies like emergencies. And that is no matter what reason, a student loses consciousness or is ill, it doesn't really matter the reason, we call 911, we get additional help. So one of the bullet points, of course, is call 911 if a student loses consciousness. The other thing was, you know, we need to get these students quickly into their parents' custody and to a doctor. Using drugs is dangerous for student health. So, you know, I did include that information this time, even though we have it in our reporting and communication procedures, a little extra information for both staff, administrative staff and for the health clerks. And when it comes to treating emergencies like emergencies, of course, we're continually dealing with the anaphylaxis prevention and response and medications at school. So once again, every fall, I try to go to all of the schools' teacher education and address anaphylaxis and asthma and AED use. We still have the leading emergency control kits in all of the AED cases across the district. I talk about students' individual health plans and where they access that information so that we don't have teachers who don't know about those student plans. And once again, this year, Dr. Unthank signed the stock EpiPen orders so that we have available stock EpiPens in the event of a student emergency. We do have 26 EpiPens prescribed this year for students at school and 103 rescue inhalers. So a total of 240 student medications and 11 student treatments. And those treatments are the treatments that our, that our health clerks and myself do so that students can remain at school all day. Otherwise, because of their illness, without these treatments, they wouldn't be able to. So that's a good thing for us. And last but not least, believe it or not, we just finished our third year of our district's wellness program. So I completed the triennial assessment as in the policy and forwarded that to district administration. We also now have, it's not a new site, it's kind of like a return site to the school district main webpage, we have a family resources tab. And that is now the new place you'll find the wellness program. Where did it go? There it is, family resources, two more down to the right, there we go. So the wellness program is there and I stole an idea from the Edmonds School District and also included the back-to-school program. There's nothing there yet because that's been stalled a little bit and some additional family resources for social, emotional as well under that tab. Okay, now I finished. Do you have any questions?
Let's open that up. Let's, let's just do a quick roll call there. Director Cou, anything?
Yeah, but I got some background noise. If you could loop back to me.
Okay, Director Jeffries, back to you.
No, just thank you for a very informative and complete report. And just let us know how we can help you out as we go into the fall and into the unknown and how we can support you and your medical staff and support the kids and staff as well. Oh, and face mask training for adults would be also good. Good, because if you watch adults, they make the same mistakes the kids do.
Yeah, I did put out in the last newsletters from the elementary schools, face mask information, pediatric information from the American Academy of Pediatrics. I amended it to the King County variety for the high school students. And under the health services webpage, we have quite a few face mask information pieces there. In fact, if you wouldn't mind going to departments, Tracy, and going down to health services and just double-click health services right there. Yep, it opens it up to our face page and underneath the part where I say, please call me if I can help you. We actually have Autumn, it's Jenny Meisenberg, the middle school health clerk's daughter, doing a cute little video. We have Dr. Sullivan's video first that we found on the fire department's website, very informative, very clear. And having previously been Dr. Sullivan's nurse, I might be slightly biased. But, and then Jenny's daughter, Autumn here, does a really cute how-to for kids. And then we're also adding a past newsletters portion so I can put some more of the information about face masks up because I am astounded at the degree of misinformation people do have about those. Thank you.
All right, great. Director Stauffer?
Just thank you again, Sonia. It's outstanding work and just really appreciate your dedication, commitment, thoroughness, all of those. So thank you.
Director Pickens?
The same for me. Thank you for, for, for keeping, keeping our kids safe and being prepared for, as prepared as you can be for what comes next. I know it's on a lot of folks' minds, parents and, and, and staff. So thank you for making it a priority. It, it's appreciated.
Absolutely. Back at you, Director Cou. You clear?
All right, good to go now with clean carpet in the living room, courtesy of a Cou boy. Thank you for the presentation and I really appreciate again, or as it's been stated, the thoroughness of it. I do appreciate these updates. It's always a reminder of the exhausting and exhaustive work you and your team do. It's, it takes a gift and as somebody who has been on the receiving end of one of your needles before, I will say that it is a gift that you were gifted with. So I guess the questions I have is just trying to get a sense of the needs in the district. And so I guess the question would be there is what gaps may exist that the board should be either aware of or mindful of as we're talking about, you know, EP and O funding. And Dr. Clark, please correct me if I'm mistaken, but I, I believe a portion of Sonia's department is funded through EP and O dollars. And so as we're assessing the right fit for our community, the question in there is what gaps may exist in terms of need versus resources available? And if there's none, if, right now, that's totally cool.
Well, I think that the important thing right now is to order in advance. I do believe that everything that's currently back-ordered is going to be back-ordered for a while. We still have resources for the supplies that we need. I mean, we're just looking at things like even hand sanitizer, you know, we probably need to start with 180 gallons. And that's probably in addition to what the maintenance department is already ordering. And I know Dr. Clark has spoken about looking at some orders that are already being made at a district level. So we still have our health services funds to go ahead and order face shields for the health clerks, certainly the usual masks and gloves multiplied times three. I feel like if we can accumulate 80 or 90 of the cloth face masks, we can use the washing machines in our living skills departments at every school to clean those on a regular basis and therefore need less of the disposable masks. So I think the main thing is getting our orders in early and if, certainly if we can piggyback with other school districts to be able to do that. I'm, I'm hopeful to find more out from Darlene Aplin tomorrow about the orders going out. So I think that meeting with the back-to-school planning committee post-COVID or during the middle of COVID, because I think, I think it hasn't really hit us yet here. I, I would love to be the liaison to the board and be able to bring you regular reports on that. So I don't really have any firm answers for you, Mr. Cou.
No, that, that was a great answer and I, I think of, you know, most of, actually, all of us are engaged beyond our school board roles in the community and have, you know, various pockets of resources available. Director Stauffer has been heavily involved with local efforts and cloth masks. And I'm aware of some shared purchasing initiatives occurring in the region as well. So we'll, we'll forward those to Dr. Clark for any potential synergy and that, that's a great perspective to share. a great perspective to share. I have, I have a question and maybe offline, just curiosity around this uptick in drug and alcohol use, because as we're navigating through these uncertain waters, personal wellness is a key concern for a lot of folks. You know, I think we're seeing it manifest in various ways right now. But I, I need to dwell on that and maybe come up with a question I can pass along to Dr. Clark. But the final offer I'll make, like I do every year, is if I can be a resource as someone who's managed a chronic condition since I was young, please don't hesitate to, to call on me if that would be helpful. But otherwise, just extremely grateful for what you and your team do to help these students out and help these families out too, because parents of students with high needs or chronic conditions, this is a big deal that often leads to socioeconomic challenges for those households. So every, every bit you're doing to address that and take care of the students has an impact that I think is tenfold the immediate benefit. That's all I have.
Appreciate that. Thank you. I will certainly keep you in mind. Thank you.
And thank you, Sonia. Great presentation. Appreciate all the work you're doing and your team. And it's always good to hear from you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate all the extra time. Never knew it was going to go that long.
That's okay. It was a good, important topic and it was a good evening to have that, so.
All right, thank you. All right, bye.
All right. Okay. Let's see, moving on, we, little bit of business here. So leading off, first thing we have is approval of our minutes from the last week's meeting. If you get a motion for that?
Mr. Chair. No second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, save sign. All right, minutes, motion carries. Next up, any changes to our current agenda?
There are none.
All right. So saying, with that, we, approval of our agenda, a motion. Motion in a second out there, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign. All right, next up, the approval of our consent agenda, motion for that?
So moved.
Move, second that.
Got a move, motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, there we go. What's up next here? My scrollie button. Okay, so we have no public comments. Next up, we just have our board communication. If anybody has anything to share, we'll start again with Director Ku down there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to start by saying just how much I enjoyed our conversation earlier with Ronnie. It was good to have her back and the discussion of continuous improvement is always one that I find inspiring. Personally, I enjoy looking at those gaps where we, us, me, you are lacking and figuring out ways to, to fine tune that for the benefit of our board and our district. So thank you for lining that up and I look forward to the next one and certainly the goals that come from that. The only other real comment I wanted to make, other than just ongoing gratitude to our executive leadership and staff for wrestling this year in Jabberwocky to the ground. And I don't want to steal any thunder from the announcement Dr. Clark may have, it's just, just the work and thoughtfulness that goes into that. And I know, you know, it's a big and meaningful and difficult thing to address with, you know, so much uncertainty, but thank you for all the work on that. My final comment, just as related to kind of the chaos de jour that we're seeing, I think it'd be remiss to be in an elected position and not make a statement about it. You know, looking for kind of the silver lining with anything that, you know, any tumult in our society or, you know, any punctuated moment in history is obviously just being a teachable event and a learning event. As a parent, I've certainly availed myself to have conversations that I might not otherwise have with my, my children and talk about, you know, what's on their minds, what's on our minds. So just anyone listening, you know, I just use my bully platform to encourage those conversations and especially having the courage to go towards the ones that are a little more difficult. There's a lot of, you know, anger right now, there's a lot of upset humans right now, there's a lot of hurt. It's okay to be yourself. You know, if you want to inspire others with your words of, you know, decrying racism and things of the like, do it, speak from the heart and do it. If you're at home and you want to continue to live as a non racist and, you know, feel pressured or harassed into, you know, making some overt statement, just, just be a good human. Reach out to others and do what, you know, 99% of us do, which is try and be good humans. But just a note of encouragement to folks who have, you know, reached out to me either discreetly or folks who have shared their, you know, impassioned thoughts online or via social media, I just want to say thank you and keep talking about it. But I have hope, you know, where there's, there's kind of this darkness and hopelessness at times, I certainly have hope. And as somebody who's been entrusted to serve in a public position, I just wanted to share those perspectives and, you know, be here as a resource in any way I can and listen, learn, but also engage directly to try and fix the problems in our communities. And I have nothing else, thank you.
Thank you. Director Jeffries.
Yeah, I would only add to what Brian said, you know, in this time of stress, the political season stressed, and on top of that, the pandemic stress and the, the evening news and watching cable news and the stresses going on there with the, what's going on around the country, all of us are stressed. And like we learned earlier today about jumping, making assumptions and jumping to conclusions too fast, probably behooves us all to be careful. I have, I've been going to all the WASDA networking and I do miss the fact that twice a week, because I sometimes need to hear it twice, they've gone to it once a week, so I'm looking forward to that. I know that tomorrow, the OSPI restart workshop people, people are getting together again and they hope to have some preliminary published by the end of the week. And their original goal was to have their final guidance by mid-June, but I'd be surprised it's more not end of June about what school will look like next year, so I'm looking forward to that. There was a question that came up on WASDA and I sent inquiry to Dr. Clark about meals. And I got a couple of community questions about, well, what about all these meals the schools are serving? How are we paying for that? How is that going? So I'd be interested at some date here to find out how that is being, summer plans to join in or feed students as well, because that came up and I didn't know the answer at that time. There was a, a couple of other things that, oh, that, you know, I put down and taking a look at, I think some of them will be addressed later in Dr. Clark's report. I think the only other school lunch and... Oh, I did see an extensive WASDA, Washington Administrator School of Board, School Association, their checklist of reopening. And I didn't read it in detail because it was several pages long with lots and lots and lots of checkboxes. And I just want to, well, have empathy for and whatever we can do to support Dr. Clark in filling out all that checkbox on reopening. It's a very complex checklist system and it's going to be a very complex decision-making process. Schools will open, we just need to make sure we do it right and we do it safe. And that checklist was pretty amazing and overwhelming all at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jeffries. Director Stoffer.
Hi, good evening. I'm still kind of in recovery from, I had 16 hours of WASDA legislative meetings on Friday, Saturday, so my head is still kind of spinning there. But I will add, couple of important dates. So during that meeting, we had a presentation by the executive director of WIAA and he was talking about activities on, and WIAA just doesn't look at sports, it's also those other activities, band, choir, so forth. And they expect to release a, some guidance on the 8th of June. And they're getting that checklist approved by the State Department of Health before it gets released. So we'll get that via WASDA or WIAA, but a lot of important information in there and then what districts will see or can expect in the fall as far as WIAA activities. And that's also tied into the other reopening type stuff. Another date is 17th of June is the next budget projections from the legislators. What I heard Friday was that they need to find $7 billion for next year. And what all does that mean? They did emphasize, so the two legislators, one from the House and one from the Senate that were there emphasized that we have a proved budget right now about what, how that goes into next year and what is coded for, what is basic education. Basic education is protected, it's some of those other areas. And so I just urge us to watch that closely. One of those is ESD out of Bremerton, the services, they provide potential cuts. They didn't go through those lists, but they just, there was a lot of caution. The rest of the legislation work, we went through 15 new proposals and, and then we had to take a break before we went into current proposals that needed some changes. There'll be more released on those, but good work trying to do all that through a Zoom meeting, vote, so forth. And by Saturday, we were all pretty well spent. Another thing I liked is that we started talking about, and there's a book out called Schools Cannot Do It Alone, and this was during a WASDA conference a couple of years ago. Jamie Volmer is the author of it. And I was reminded that, so back when we were, as a country, trying to decide what public education was supposed to be or wanted to be, and we just, because we were trying to move away from what had occurred in, in England and France and so forth, but we just, our basic thing was the reading and writing, arithmetic, cultivating values that serve a new democratic society. Then in the 1900s, we added, which I think is, is items to student health. And so we think about what was happening during that time, but we added lessons in basic hygiene, courses on nutrition, screening for vision, hearing and dental problems and shots. So I'd like to, again, thank Sonia for keeping us up to speed and all that. And then fast forward to today and we have, there's 23 other things that are added to our list at public education. And, and as we navigate through these waters with COVID-19, there's going to probably be more in how we, how we find ourself on the other side. So again, enjoyed and appreciate the workshop we had earlier. And Dr. Clark, thank you again for your weekly updates. That helps a lot in seeing where we're at. And yeah, that's about all I have, thank you.
All right, thank you. Director Pickens?
Thank you. Just also want to say I was happy to participate in the board workshop today, getting that important information, reviewing it was, was very insightful. I'm looking forward to, to doing more planning as it relates to that. There's, there's some, I am, I am optimistic in, although it's, there's a lot of uncertainty out there, I know that a lot of decisions are being made, both the state level and the district level, that involve a lot of educator collaboration. And I'm, I'm, I'm happy to, the OSPI work group has a lot of fellow colleagues that I know of that are on there and they're making sure to involve the folks that are actually on the ground doing the work so that as, and I know we're doing that at the district level too. So I am encouraged by us keeping that perspective in mind because I think that input is going to be critical with, with any plan that is going to succeed. And especially in these times, as, as Director Ku had mentioned, there's, you know, to add some other uncertainty to it, you know, I'm, I'm glad that we're, we're reaching out to, to those that are on the ground to, to know how we can proceed next because there's just a lot of uncertainty out there. So that's, that's all for me.
Great, thank you. And I'd just like to finish up again. Yeah, it was great to participate in the, the workshop. Like to just really, you know, concentrate on all the great work that has been done by the district, the staff, the students. We have, we have just a few weeks left of school and during that timeframe, our, this is where our focus needs to be, is on finalizing this year, getting our kids through the final of the year, getting our students that are seniors deservedly the best kind of graduation ceremony that we can provide for them at this time. And, you know, I'm just encouraged to know that although there are a lot of different thoughts and opinions out there when it comes to our students right now, this is where our focus needs to be and that we've done a, I think we've done a pretty tremendous job of coming together as a district and a community to support, to, to support those students. And, and that's, that's the work that we're here to do and I think that's the work that our community is here to do as well. And I just want to encourage everybody to just focus on the positivity of that and what we have left over the next few weeks to finish out this school year for our students. And that's all I have. Thank you. Next up, we have super, nope, we don't have superintendent Clark yet. We have assistant superintendent Mon, I think, is joining us with some, with our math adoption.
Good evening, President Gibson. Can you hear me okay?
I can, you couldn't hear me responding though when I was commuting.
I, I know, I'm going to go ahead, I've got, I've got Jill Briard with me, I want to go ahead and make sure that she can hear me. Jill, are you there?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great, okay. So we will go ahead and get started. As you know me, I'm the assistant superintendent, Jennifer Mon, I'm here with Jill Briard, our SHS math teacher and department chair. We'll go ahead and start our presentation. Tracy, if you can go ahead and forward a little bit. So we're here tonight to present for the new high school math adoption. Just to give you a little bit of a background, so instructional material committees are governed by law. I put up the RCWs and the WACS for you. And they're also governed by SWIM District Policy and Procedure 2020. Some of those laws are really specific about having public comments and having curriculums available for staff and the community to see. So one thing that you'll see on the district website, which I don't have up on here, is that there's a section on the website for an IMC and there's a specific section on this math adoption. So if, if people in the community wanted to give input, they could do that through our website. And there was also a banner that I put up about a month ago. Tracy's just pulling it up, it's on the main page. So we had to get a little bit creative around the laws and the rules and ensuring that people could, could get feedback. from us. So it's Tracy, it's under instruction. And under instruction, there's an IMC instructional materials committee is down there. And we've got information on what an IMC is. And then we have information on the current math adoption that we have going on. So that information is there. So after the presentation, if you want to take a look at that, you are welcome to. In my research for the math adoption, I could go back about 10 years confidently knowing that we have not adopted a math curriculum at the high school in at least 10 years. I would venture to say it's a little bit longer than that. But I'm not positive. So I don't, if you remember in the fall, we were under consolidated program review, which which meant that a lot of my time was taken up. And so I asked the math department to go ahead and pilot and field test curriculum that they were interested in in the fall. I kind of reversed what we did. We we piloted and field tested first, which in hindsight is amazing that we did that because had they been, had we done a normal IMC, we would have, we would have been piloting and testing during the pandemic, which obviously could not have happened. So the fact that I did it a little bit backwards, I'm pretty happy about because we're able to get to this point and get through a field test and a pilot in the fall. So in the fall, five of the math teachers at the high school engaged in a field test and pilot. They did three different curriculums, as you can see on the screen here, Agile Lines, CPM and Carnegie Learning. And they spent the fall soliciting feedback from the students, collaborating with each other, deciding which two, which one, which three of all of them should come to the IMC. Ultimately, they met as a department and decided that CPM and Carnegie Learning were the two curriculums that they felt were the strongest and that they wanted to go through the IMC process. So they sent Carnegie Learning and CPM to the IMC. You can go forward one more, Trace. So what they brought those to to the IMC chair, which I am the IMC chair, and I reviewed them for their alignment to Common Core standards and reviewed them on ed reports. And on ed reports, they were the two top rated curriculum in the United States. So I knew that they had chosen two really phenomenal curriculums. I felt that it might be a difficult decision for the IMC to make because they were both focused on usability for students. They had rigor. They were aligned to the to the Common Core. So the IMC began, we began virtually after the pandemic started. We met every couple of weeks. We've been doing that over the last two months. The the IMC consisted of administrators, teachers, CTE, highly capable representative and representatives from special education. So they reviewed both the curriculums for differentiated strategies. And they rated the curriculum against the Washington State model for the evaluation of bias, content and instructional materials. And that's a big, that's a big word, but that is governed by OSPI and every curriculum that is adopted must go through that process. They had some wonderful conversations. They they discussed the the Lexile scores of the reading and the differentiated strategies that both curriculum provided. And ultimately, when it came down to them deciding on what they wanted, there's 12 voting members. I'm a voting member, but I did not need to vote. All 11 members decided unanimously that they wanted to bring Carnegie Learning to the board to adopt for the the first high school math adoption in over a decade. So I have Jill here with me and she's going to walk you through the instructional approaches with Carnegie and what sold the IMC on on Carnegie. Go ahead, Jill.
Thank you. I am so excited to be bringing this curriculum to you today. I've been teaching math for over 25 years. It's my third year in the district. And this both curriculums reviewed really inspired me as a math teacher because I know it's so good for students. Over the last three years, having to open up an Algebra II book that was published in 2005 that was kind of like an Algebra 1.5 book along with other things just made me want to cry. And the algebra and geometry books were functional. But this is I'm just so happy because this is going to be so much better for the students. With Carnegie Learning, the three things they focus on in their curriculum is that engage, develop and demonstrate. And really, it's about getting student buy-in. And that if they are seeing problems that interest them from looking at the world outside their classroom, that they're connecting to the math with their peers on their own, with their teacher, and that they get to go in depth with some problems and explore and not have to do 50 problems that are all the same type if they don't need it. That it really helps them focus on being mathematical, not being a memorization robot. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So as Carnegie Learning kind of has this blended approach, there's two parts to it. One part is the student textbook. It's a workbook approach. One of the benefits of this, it has built in notes for the students, has worked out examples, space for students to do more work. The research shows that students who are interactively engaging with their writing, with their math, are going to do better, which makes sense. But sometimes it just helps to have research to back that up. Looking through the different problems, it's again connecting with examples outside their classroom experiences. And it's them a chance to see how this math really can make a difference for them outside of the classroom. Next slide. The second part of the blended approach is through technology. There's a program called Mathia and it uses artificial intelligence to see where the students are at. It doesn't, like I said, it doesn't have them spending doing 50 problems that are all the same if a student doesn't need it. But if a student does need more practice, it also points out, you know, this is where you have an error. Oh, you need a hint here and really kind of tailors it to the students so they are able to make the progress they need. And so while the textbook has a few practice problems for each lesson, the bulk of the practice will actually be coming through the Mathia software. Next slide. So it's again, nice to have other people say that it's good stuff. It's this blended approach using these two parts together. It really works for students and not that test scores are everything with standardized tests, but they do show us some things across large spans of students. The blended approach does allow students to self pace when they're working on the Mathia and to allow teachers to get real time data to differentiate, know that, oh, I need to as a class have an intervention or with this group of students or individual students that we can do better. Next slide. One of the selling points for us on Carnegie is that it's very adaptable to different student learning styles and different teacher learning styles. And as we're in the midst of the pandemic, different educational settings. So we are able to be flexible with how we are engaging with the workbook, which is also available online. But and with the Mathia software and things that we can send home to students who don't have technology internet access yet as we're still working on getting that figured out for no small chunk of our students. That it's going to provide us a lot of flexibility, which would have been nice just in a normal school year. But it's going to be particularly a gift to us as we are going through this next year. Next slide. Carnegie Learning also provides a wide range of professional development opportunities. And I don't know exactly which ones we're going to take on, but I know that we're going to in addition to the training that we would typically get in the fall with like in August with a new curriculum, we will have a teacher coach who comes in and talks to us about our goals. We'll sit in our classrooms and provide feedback, might even come in and teach a lesson so we can see how this kind of student centered learning can really thrive and be functional. Because for some of us, it might be a bit of a shift because it's not as much a teacher delivering knowledge that is in his or her head model. Obviously, our knowledge is still needed and useful, but the students are hopefully going to have more ownership in their learning. And there's some professional development that goes along with that. And that was everything along with my notes. So we'll go to the next slide and I'll hand it back over to Jennifer.
Thanks, Jill. That was great. Just a couple of thank yous before I say a couple more things. Just so that you are aware, our IMC consisted of Sarah Benjamin from OPA, Jill Briard, Carol Harms and Julie Fisher from the high school, Mark Fisher from or Mark, sorry, not Mark Fisher, Mark Harris from the middle school, Saxon from Helen Haller, Donna Hudson from Gray Wolf, Steve Mahitka from the high school, Carmen Maring from Gray Wolf, Jody Olson, who's our High Cap Coordinator for the district and Shannon Pasalk, who's at the middle school. And I just wanted to say thank you to Tracy for answering my technical questions and Darlene for helping me with the budget for this new curriculum. It at the time that I got this to the board, I didn't have the different quotes in terms of the cost, but we are looking at a seven year adoption for this curriculum. And the reason that it's seven, I could do five or seven years. And the reason that it's seven is that we did ELA at the high school last year. And so I wanted the ELA when they come up for a re-adoption or to look at again, I wanted the ELA to go first. And then I wanted math to come after them. So I can I can talk to you about that if you need to, but it will be a seven year adoption. And it will also come with seven years of professional development for the math department at the high school. And that is all we have for this evening. Could I could Jill or I answer any questions from the board at this time?
Well, great. Thanks for the great presentation to start off with. That's a heck of a team you have there too. So I've got pretty good faith in that. Sounds like a lot of good work, but we'll open it up down the line there. Director Ku, anything?
Thank you, sir. Just noting that as a board, since we were just talking about this in the workshop, adoption, curriculum adoption is a key pillar of what we do. That said, and mirroring your comments about the team that brought this forward and obviously the professionals here today. This is certainly one of those moments where I'm inclined to trust our professionals and appreciate the thorough work you and your colleagues have done to bring this forward. So I'm looking forward and voting in favor of adopting this curriculum at the appropriate time.
Great. Thank you. Director Jeffries.
Yeah, I'm really didn't know much about this curriculum until I saw that it had been the one that had been chosen. And so I've been looking at it. I'm really excited by the curriculum. And it sounds, I don't know if it's a tough choice or not, but I'm really impressed with the Carnegie Learning System. In fact, I'm signed up for a webinar, I think on Friday on getting started with Mathia. I'm not sure what that was and I think I'll try to find out. I'm very, very impressed with the IMC process and the professionalism that was put into this choice. I think 10 years, it's long overdue and hopefully that that's seven year cycle. At the end of that seven years, we will be on top of it. And so we don't go for another 10 year cycle of trying to do this. I'm really impressed with the seven years of professional development. My experience with curriculum development too often is you work really hard to pick a curriculum, you adopt it and then nothing happens. I mean, you have the curriculum, but no more professional development is often left to the individual teacher to and I think having the commitment of Carnegie Learning to continued plan, professional development all through this process is what will make this program work. I do have some concerns. Of course, cost is one of them. I wouldn't, my role is the school board and fiduciary responsibility. We need to know how much this is going to cost. I know I want to, as I've mentioned in a couple of school improvement plans, the state has a goal of 90% meeting standards. And by 2027, and we have a ways to go on that. It looks like there's some summative informative evaluation built into that. I would like to see some expressed goals from every school. This is how we're going to get there. So, you know, over the next I think Carnegie talks about learning, you know, measurable learning goals and how we meet them. I think that's real important. I also have some equity concerns with, we do have some achievement gaps in math that I'm very concerned about and that need to be closed and a concern about equity gaps as far as access at home. Blended learning as defined by Carnegie, you know, between the textbook and the software. But we also have a possibility of blended learning between school and home. And I still have great concerns about making sure all students have equal access and to the ability to use this learning tool at home should they be required to not come to school for every other day or whatever the whatever we come up with. Like I said, that's still to be decided. But I'm sure there's going to be some blended learning that's going to involve. So I'd be interested in hearing more about how we might try to solve that problem. But all in all, this curriculum is really exciting and I want to thank the committee for all their hard work and expertise. And I'm really looking forward to putting this into place and seeing how how the students do and how they respond. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Director Stoffer.
Yes, I'll ditto what Director Jeffrey says there. I was going to ask the question about the school improvement plan. So thank you there. It's we asked that back in the fall when we were looking at the high school. So it's just want to keep track of that. And thank you, Jennifer and team for I think very thorough review on this and then explaining what instructional material committee is. I think that's important that for that message out from the schools to the community also. And the only real question I have is how do you see this rolling out to our families? With what we're looking at right now for what school looks like in the fall type thing. But how do you see it rolling out? I I remember the last adoption because my daughter was she went through that. And it is very important to get the message out to the families on that. But from there, thank you very much for your work and the team's work there.
All right, great. Director Pickens.
I just want to thank Jennifer and Jill for the the presentation. I don't have any specific questions other than to say, I Jill, I could I could definitely hear the the excitement and the passion in your voice as you presented. And to me, that means quite a bit. So I know you're you're in the classroom teaching it every day. So as well as the other the other colleagues on the team, I'm glad we have those folks in place. And it sounds like they all all agreed on this being the best path forward. So thank you again for your presentation. Definitely looking forward to to seeing it rolled out.
All right, great. Thanks. And and as well, thanks for the presentation. And this is set for our next board meeting for approval. So, you know, board members, we have a little time. If you have any further questions to come up with before then, we'll see you next next board meeting. All right. Well, Jennifer, you're back up again with another team. So we got middle school ELA.
I I am. So tonight I have with me Jason Chaddick, who's the current current ELA Department Head at the middle school and Holly Raymer, who was the ELA Department Head last year. Holly and Jason, are you both there?
I'm here.
Great. Okay, so this this IMC is a little bit different. So I'm going to start with the with the 1819 school year. Some of the board members were not on the board last year. President Gibson, you and Director Ku and Director Stoffer were both part of this presentation last year. So just as a reminder, during the 1819 school year, the IMC met four times to review curriculum for the high school. They looked at Springboard, Pearson and McGraw-Hill. Again, they were reviewed for their alignment to Common Core state standards, differentiated strategies and based on the OSPI biased instruct bias content for instructional materials. At that time, back in the spring, they decided to adopt Pearson's My Perspective as the new ELA as the new ELA high school curriculum. At the time, the middle school was in the middle of an update with Springboard that they had adopted a few years before. And they didn't want to confuse the kids and thought it would be too disruptive for them to field test My Perspectives at the same time. And so when I brought the adoption to the board last year, there was some questions from the board as to why this wasn't a 612 adoption. And we talked about that a little bit. So go ahead and move forward one slide, Tracy. So in the spring last year, we did adopt My Perspectives with Pearson through the school board. And this year, they've done a wonderful job of integrating that into their classrooms. But like Director Ku had asked back in the spring, how come not the middle school? And so I've got the middle school here with me and they're going to kind of walk you through what happened after the adoption in the spring. And then we'll talk about that as we go along. So Holly, do you want to start? Or Jason, would you prefer to start?
I can speak to that. So at the time that we were asked if we would switch gears from Springboard to looking at Pearson, we were working on a special program, Core Plus, which was, we really needed to look closely at scaffolding with our special needs students and how that fit with Springboard. And my professional growth goal last year was to really pick apart Springboard and see how it lined up with state testing. And through the process of really, really picking it apart and seeing how Springboard was matching up with the expectations in state testing, state testing was changing some things up and Springboard was not updating along with that. And so that was putting our students to a disadvantage. And so we requested to take a look at Pearson and saw that some of the key units that Springboard was not keeping up with state testing and Springboard or Pearson was. And so at that point, we started asking questions of teachers at the high school and asked if we could be included in piloting that this year. And we went through training with the high school through Pearson Curriculum Specialists. And we discovered that it really was going to help us meet the needs of our special needs students as well as our ELL students. And it had many of the things that we were having to invent ourselves through Springboard embedded in it. So we got really excited about it. And we've been working really closely with the high school to align textbooks as well as trade books to make sure that there's no overlap. Things that used to be taught at the high school now maybe moving down to the middle school.
Thanks, Holly. Jason, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to say that after going to some of the professional development trainings for the curriculum this year, that Holly's right. We did kind of progressively get kind of more enthused about My Perspectives. There were a few things that I noted that I could really see using in my classroom on a frequent basis. One is that the online interface for My Perspectives is a lot more intuitive and seems to be less clunky than Springboard, which we completely abandoned using the Springboard online interface. It also communicates directly with Google Classroom, which is something that's become a key component in our ELA classroom at the middle school. But one of the major points was that the curriculum just seems to have a wealth of support for low-level readers and English language learners. For instance, using one of their texts on the online interface, you can very, very easily switch the Lexile level of the text to accommodate struggling readers. There are also instructions available in Spanish, I noticed. And just way more supports overall. Even the Teacher's Edition textbook, when you flip through it, is, just has a lot of great activities to help differentiate instruction in your classroom. Whereas the Teacher Edition for Springboard was really no different than the Student Edition. It just had, you know, a couple little add-ons here, which I never really paid attention to because they didn't seem relevant in my classroom. So this seems like it is going to be a good fit for us.
Thanks, Jason. Holly, did you want to add anything?
No, I think that covers it.
Okay. So just so that the board knows. So then the middle school did come back. They had been collaborating with the high school for a good, most of the year. And they did field test. I didn't feel the need that we had to go through a full IMC as we had just come out of the IMC, which everyone had been a part of. And the middle school, the only part of the IMC rules that they didn't really follow was the field testing and the piloting, which they did end up doing this year on their own. I have to give the middle school a ton of credit. They adopted Springboard back in 2017. They had to do a ton of work to scaffold it and to make it work for all students. And so when the new curriculum was presented to them last spring, they just weren't in a place to be able to take a really good, honest look at it. I have to say that they came back this fall. This was really a grassroots effort from them to take a look and see what it could do for their students. And they have sat down and so they have come back and they have requested, every single ELA teacher at the middle school has requested that we adopt My Perspectives at the middle school. And by doing that, if the board approves it, we'll have a continuous ELA curriculum, 612, for the first time in decades. And so they've done a really great job. And they are here to ask or answer any questions that any of you might have. But we would like to request that we adopt Pearson's My Perspectives in grades six through eight for the fall of 2020. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions and I'll pass it back down to the board. And just going back to the last one, I know that the question was asked. So we'll just understand this cost on both of these. So the math curriculum and then the ELA as well.
And I'm happy to provide that. I can do that virtually to the board later in the week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Ku?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. Once again, appreciate the team and all the work you've done on this, especially with such a recent pivot. I guess recent in glacial and curriculum terms. I'm really intrigued by the expanded capabilities of the online interface and especially because, you know, as we're making sense of this brave new world that we're in and trying to anticipate for the fall, can you speak further about capabilities that come with this curriculum adoption? And perhaps even in contrast, I mean, we have your recommendation and that means the world to me. But in contrast to where we're coming from, what capabilities will be gained by going with your recommendation down this path?
I'd be happy to speak to some more specific points about that. So for example, Springboard has an online interface, okay? Where students can log into a Springboard account. And then when you go onto this account, it has a couple of things. You can access an online textbook, for example. And theoretically, you could assign them assignments out of the online textbook and they would be able to, you know, type in responses to questions in the textbook and read articles and whatnot. And I believe there is a kind of a way to differentiate for Lexile text. Well, the problem is that it's, for whatever reason, it's just not a very intuitive setup. Kids have a very hard using it. And we also had lots of problems with things not saving. You know, like things don't save well on Springboard. They can't actually submit, this is amazing to me, but you can't actually submit an assignment on the online interface in Springboard. So you can go online and you can read an article and you can respond to the questions to the following article. But I don't, you can't actually, after you type out the questions in the interface, you can't send that to the teacher. And so just using it, using the Springboard online interface just quickly became obsolete for us, especially since when we adopted that curriculum simultaneously, we got a grant for Chromebooks and we started using Google Classroom. And we, like, pretty much everybody immediately just started basically retyping the assignments to use Google Classroom because students were having such an easy time with that and it's a very intuitive setup. The new curriculum, My Perspectives curriculum is designed to work in tandem with Google Classroom. So theoretically, I could work in the online interface in My Perspectives and I could send an article from My Perspectives to my Google Classroom and students could just work on it there. And we weren't able to, because of COVID and whatnot, we weren't able to really start getting into that. We will in the fall. But it also looks that, you know, grading goes both ways on it, too. So I could, for instance, download a rubric into Google Classroom for an essay or something like that. It's just a much smoother operating system. I don't know if that answers your question or not, Brian.
Absolutely. And I really appreciate the clarification there. And I just remain impressed with the pedagogical progressions as we're, you know, again, trying to understand this new method of teaching. And I applaud your team for the work you've done. And this seems like this places you in a more nimble position to really do its best for our students. So thank you. And I don't have any other questions.
All right. Thanks, Brian. Director Jeffries?
No, once again, like Eric mentioned a while ago about the math, I could feel your excitement about this new curriculum. I applaud you from pivoting, as somebody else said, from a curriculum that really wasn't serving you well to one you think will do a better job for you and the kids. Along with the math curriculum, I also did some similar investigations about the curriculum and found, you know, very impressed with it. I did not, I don't find the achievement gap, the same kind of achievement gap in English Language Arts within the schools. And so I applaud you for that. We do have a ways to go yet to get to 90% by 2027. But I think this kind of curriculum and the enthusiasm of the teachers could sure help us get there. I'm really impressed with the Instructional Materials Committee, both committees and the work they do. I mean, I think that goes back to Jennifer's lead and all that and some fantastic teachers and administrators that are working really hard to do the right thing. I do like the professional development. I would hope the professional development plan is similar to math, where this is going to occur over the next few years until the next curriculum adoption that we continue with the professional development, which I think is really critical. And I don't know about the other board members and I don't know if it's related or not, but I was sure getting a lot of phone calls from Pearson. Now unfortunately, he says sarcastically, I was never able to get to the phone in time to answer, to see what they wanted. But I got numerous telephone calls from Pearson. And I don't know if it's just a coincidence or if it was related to this curriculum adoption or not. But thank you. And having spent a chunk of my teaching career at the middle school, I always have a special place in my heart for English school or middle school teachers and middle school kids. So more power to you. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Director Stocker?
Just again, appreciate the hard work here and leadership also of our Assistant Superintendent on this. And I really liked the alignment from six to 12. And so with that, it's already been said, but thank you very much to the team. And thank you.
Thank you, Director Stocker and Director Pickens.
Hi, just a couple of questions. And I don't know, it sounds like maybe Jason might be the best person to answer. But I'll say that, yeah, I think the fact that all the middle school teachers being on board with it, that says plenty enough for me. And again, the fact that folks are excited and passionate, want to switch, I think that means the world to me. You were talking a little bit about the Google Classroom capabilities, which certainly piqued my interest. It sounds like, and so here are my two questions. It sounds like the interface would directly correspond with assignments that are given within Google Classroom, if I'm not mistaken. So that that way, I know for ease of upgrading for teachers and whatnot, it would all be right there if I'm hearing you right. And also, I'm curious to find out, I know you said the old system was a little bit hard, wasn't very friendly for students to figure it out. So did you get some direct feedback from students? Although this might be anecdotal, but about saying, oh, yeah, it was pretty easy. I was able to access this at home and it was a pretty slick system or I could upload it accordingly?
So to answer your first question, I want to stress the word, it appears that it will do these things. Because like I said, as far as it working with Google Classroom, we haven't really been able to get into the nitty gritty of that yet because of, obviously, you know, schools closing down and things like that. I've done a lot of looking into it and I've watched lots of YouTube videos and I've been trying to kind of pick around and find the information that I can. And so basically, what it would, I think what it would look like is Pearson likes to use the term that it quote unquote talks with Google Classroom. It's designed to work with it. The benefit here is that, let's say I wanted to assign an article that had some questions at the end of it for students to consider. Rather than retyping all the questions into a worksheet for students to do and then also either finding a way to give them the materials, either online or in the classroom, something like that. Oftentimes in my classroom, we'd just end up using the textbook in the classroom and then I would just post the questions online. This would, I could simply choose the lesson out of the book and send that to my Google Classroom, if that makes any sense. So that students would not just have the questions, but they'd also have the article right there when they opened up the assignment.
Okay. All right.
I can speak to this a little bit as a parent because my daughter is currently using Pearson through the high school. And then also as a teacher in assigning Pearson work at home. It is very easy to send videos and assignments through Pearson for students to be able to view. Right now, teachers are spending a lot of time making videos on their own to give instruction. And I have to say that Pearson has a huge bank of videos that I actually did use in my classroom during the pilot. And I found, I think that next year, those videos and the resources that Pearson has for online learning go beyond just an interface. The videos, the supplemental materials, I think we're going to find very, very valuable next year. Instead of reinventing things ourselves, we'll be able to concentrate on the actual instruction instead of inventing things and creating videos. So.
All right. Awesome. Well, I definitely appreciate that elaborating further. And I definitely hear you regarding the creating videos, having to recreate the wheel, all that stuff. So I think that if this makes that process a little more seamless, I think it's fantastic. I'm excited to proceed more. So thank you.
All right, great. Thanks, Director Pickens and the rest of you. So thank you for the presentation. That was wonderful. And we look forward to, again, next board meeting voting on this.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Well, without further ado, why, I, I have an issue with that term, by the way. I don't know why, when people overuse it. But anyway, I think we're finally to you there, Dr. Clark. It's on, it's all on you.
Just want to say how much I've enjoyed this board meeting because I haven't had to talk very much.
I was gonna say, we haven't heard much.
And that has been very enjoyable. I just before, hopefully the individuals, Jason, Jill, Holly and Jennifer haven't got off quite yet. Kudos to all of you and your colleagues for the work you've done. It was, it was, you know, strained by the coronavirus and everything, but ultimately our children benefit. And, and that is thanks to all of you. So appreciate all the hard work. I don't have a tremendous amount. I'm gonna rehash some things. Chair Gibson mentioned before, OPMA has been extended through June 17th of the restricted OPMA. I'm expecting our board meeting in July. The past two times that they've extended this, they've extended it for a whole month. And so this time they only did it for 17 days. So I'm guessing the days of restricted OPMA are running short. So we'll have to talk about that, but both this meeting and the next one in June, we'll be able to do that. I hope to send you an update on graduation and the services. We'll be doing that at the Security Services Northwest site. On the way, I'll say in the eastern end of town, I went out and looked at that. And the D'Amico family are really stepping up and providing so a great opportunity for our kids in, in, in this situation, working with the insurance company to get everything copacetic for the whole deal. And like I say, June 19th, 6 o'clock. We'll talk about that later, you know, in detail, and I will send you a note. Now I do want to tell you, OPA, Olivia, not OPMA, but OPA has a very small graduation planned on June 12th. Right now they have five students graduating and they're going to have a drive by graduation in the football field park or football stadium parking lot. And they're just going to socially distance the five seniors and people are going to drive around honk and wave. It should be probably not much longer than 20 minutes. I don't have the time yet for sure, but that's going to be on June 12th in the football stadium parking lot. And we'll have that coned off and all of that to honor those students. I will be sending you some information on the student hearing that we will have on Thursday. And you should get that electronically sometime tomorrow. I'm putting all that together and Tracy and I are getting it for 6 o'clock on Thursday evening. Yeah. Since I didn't have to talk too much tonight, saving my voice for the chamber tomorrow. I am one of the guest speakers. I don't know if I'm the only one, but I am. Let's see, we have our first back to school meeting, how we're getting ready for that Wednesday at 10 o'clock. I have the agenda. I, I spent a lot of time, I've read about six different programs. The WASA program, Director Jeffries mentioned a little bit earlier. We also have the Palo Alto from California School District, outline ESDs, doing a lot of work with that. And so I hope to have a real productive meeting. I do agree with, and I can't remember which board member said it, but I do agree that I don't think we're going to get any direction from OSPI until late June, even though they're telling us it could be as early as the 10th. But I'm expecting it that last week. It's the week of June 20th, towards the end of the week of June 22nd. One thing I, I do want to share with you, as many of you know, that Steve Mahitka and his wife Michelle have took, taken jobs in the Greater Vancouver area. And so we have Steve, Steve Jobs, Steve's teaching position posted. But Vince Ricabini is going to be the CTE director along with the other various programs in the district of OPA and SOS and, and the beginning of the online academy. I do want to share with you that, you know, that because of that situation and Vince taking over those jobs, one of the things that was pointed out when we were looking at some of the budget cuts was that we were heavy administrative and, and with a, using some of the CTE funding to contribute towards this salary is, I, I do not believe that we will be overstaffed administratively next year. So I wanted to make that point out as we move forward with the budget. I know Darling's working hard on it, getting information from the, the state. And I hope to, by the time we meet on June 15th, I hope to have more direction from the feds and the state on the, how we can spend the CARES money, the $700,000. We know it has to be directed directly to COVID prevention and those things. But we need a little bit more specifics on that. I do want to ask each board member, and I know at least, I think three of the five of you spent time on Citizens for Squim Schools. I need that, I, I've spoken with Eric Danielson earlier today. Tracy has spoken with, oh, and I can't think of her first name, Mrs. Pearson. And it is a pretty much a defunct organization. They do have somewhere between $6,000 and $7,000 in their treasury. And for us to, you know, run a ballot measure here in, in November, or for that matter, even February, we have to reorganize and rejuvenate that organization or create another completely different organization. So what I would like to ask of each board member, if you could give me one person that I'll get a hold of in the next week, 10 days, who you think might be a strong member for the rejuvenation of the cities, Citizens for Squim Schools. So I need that from you. And the last question, and I don't want to leave this board meeting until we talk about the Peyton and the scholarship. Brandino, do you want to have that conversation? You want to have it for another day?
No, we probably could just, we could do it today, real quick here at least. So, you know, this has kind of been a, I don't know, a question to deal with over the last, well, couple of years since I've been on the, on the board. And I know in the past, we had superintendent Neil was looking into some options and, and all. And anyway, you know, we, when we do our, our, and I haven't had the opportunity to participate in the actual interviews in the past, but I know that we do have a, a policy that says that the boards, at the board's discretion for a $500 scholarship. I think it's kind of implied when we're selecting these individuals. So, you know, the question comes up of, all right, we've just had this, we've had a great participant here in Peyton. And it's kind of expected that she was getting that. It was reported that. So how do we, how do we pay that? Now we've had some discussions in the past. Do we, you know, but nothing's really come to fruition as far as donating our, our, our board salary, to use that term, I guess, towards a pot. We, we can't use district funds. That's illegal. Is there opportunity for us as a board at this point to, you know, look at that option, to get some money in the coffers? Are there options to, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to, to pitch in a piece to, to help pay for that at this point. Cause I think it's something that we have promoted and expressed. And I, so I wanted to just open that up for a conversation thought to the, to the, to the rest of the board.
I'll jump in on that. I appreciate y'all raising the item. Obviously I've attempted to handle this more discreetly in the past, but I believe that perhaps that time has passed. And so it feels refreshing to speak openly about it. Thank you for iterating the challenge that we faced. This board in our previous iterations did promise student board reps scholarships for their service to the board and subsequently found out that those indeed were considered an excessive gift of public funds. Believe board, I'm sorry, district policy caps any gift, for lack of a better term, that's not the correct term, for a student and their learning to be at $50. Just as a reminder for some of our newer board reps. We did attempt to coordinate kind of an unofficial, because we certainly didn't want to coerce anyone unduly into either contributing directly to a scholarship fund to satisfy these obligations. Or to, you know, potentially redirect through their own personal their own personal agency, redirect any compensation they may choose to receive as a board member for time served on the board. So with all that said, given the historic context aside, which may be unnecessary for folks, but absolutely am happy to contribute to satisfying what I believe is a duly earned obligation by Peyton. To send her along her way and as a gesture of gratitude for her service. And then also reengage to work towards those pending obligations from previous years that as far as I know, we've yet to satisfy. So thank you again for bringing this up.
Thank Director too. Any, any, any other thoughts out there?
Well, this is Director Jeffries. This seems to be an ongoing problem. I think it, from my, even though I'm new to the board, I may have attended more board meetings than most of the members. I know this has been kind of an ongoing issue that has not been cleaned up from maybe few, three or four superintendents. I'm not in five or six business officers. State constitution says it is illegal. Our current procedure 1250 has that language in it about the $500 scholarship. That needs to be fixed and finally fixed so that doesn't put the school district at risk. Serving on a couple of other, they have chosen certificates of appreciation, letters of recommendation, but are, have not voted to provide any monetary scholarships for serving on the board. I personally think it's that a scholarship of that nature, unless a, another organization wants to take that on. And we have a lot of student leaders that are involved in lots of boards around the community. I'm not particularly in favor of establishing this. I think if anybody deserves a Peyton, I agree. And, but we've had other student reps in the past that probably really deserve it and will have others in the future. But unfortunately, I think this is something the school board should take on. And if, if there is such a scholarship, it needs to be totally separate from school board activity. But that's my opinion. So I throw it out there. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Yes, this is Director Stoffer. So I, I can take it back in history to 2016, when it first was, became an audit item. And a former business director is the one that first said, hey, this is, should not be doing this. And that was confirmed for those, through those state auditors. And I'll, I'll step back a little bit. I, I believe, I truly believe that our student reps outstanding job need to be recognized. That it comes down to the gift of the public funds. And, and yes, there was probably some promises. And that my notes show, we haven't paid a student rep since prior to 2015. Of course, I'd have to, we'd have to check through the finance records. So I, I also did, since you've worked there before, I'm trying to get an umbrella or another group to be the placeholder for that. And with conversations with Squim Alumni Association, SCF, reached out to former board members, retired board members. And there wasn't that buy-in to do that. And so my concern is moving forward, I don't want to obligate those that follow us basically the same way that we have been obligated now. Because it was folks that did come before us, 2011 and so forth, I think that's where it goes back to. But so how do we move forward right now is, is the question, if that is, is our, our procedure says.
Stoffer, if I could just catch you real quick, and, and I, I 100% agree with that. That may be a different discussion that we need to look at. I think at this point, the question is revolving around our current board, school board representative and, and how and if we're going to deal with this. And I, and I think, you know, as Director Jeffries brought up as well, this is definitely an issue that we need to look at. I don't, I don't want it to be a, maybe we can put this on agenda for maybe our next board meeting as far as if we want to completely abolish that rule or how we want to handle it. I, my, my question today and the, and the question at hand at this point is, what do we do about Peyton? That, that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Roger, I apologize for that.
That's okay. It's perfectly, perfectly well. I just, it's a long meeting and, 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 and it's, and you're perfectly, you're absolutely correct. And, and all of us have spoke to it that, and so I didn't mean to cut you off, but I, I just want to get back to that focus point. So.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely, Director Pickens.
So was this a, a commitment that we, when, when I say we, I guess using that loosely, but the district made to Peyton prior to becoming a member of the board?
I, I would defer to who was on that, that the elect, you know, the committee to selector.
That was me and former Director Hendrickson. And in that interview, in which we also had student reps Damon and then student rep Kia. And it was, we reiterated that this, we could not give a gift of public funds. Do I have written notes on that? No. But we did tell Peyton that this is by merit. Do I have written notes on that? No. But we did tell Peyton that this is by merit and letters of recommendations. And then that point two five, community service was addressed in there. And then with our policy, it says at the discretion of the board. And that's how it was expressed to Peyton. But I am, if we need to make this, well, we do need to make this right. And so if that's doing a donation somehow, it's supposed to go by our policy to the institution and not to the member. So.
Right.
So. Yeah, I think yeah, I think, I think just some, some further consideration might be, might, might be needed. I'm, I wasn't aware of this prior to, prior to tonight. So.
Sure. Thanks. Well, again, yeah, it's just something we'll need to deal with here. And, you know, and, and, and there is definitely no obligation to anybody on the board. That's all a personal perspective at this time, at this point. But, you know, just definitely wanted to open it up as a discussion as well. And, and then, and, and also to do as we have, create the further discussion moving down the line of how, how we're going to handle this in the, in the, in the future that we, we really need to work on for sure. But so with that said, this isn't anything we're going to need a vote on particularly, but maybe just, you know, you guys could reach out to me individually with your, your thoughts on that and we can see.
I, I do want to show Trey, the, the school board is allowed to, to purchase a gift as long as it's under $50. And we have bought this for Tracy and I chose this gift for Peyton to put on her desk at college. And then on the other side, there's a clock. S clock. And Tracy, would you read what it says? I can't say, read it.
I've got it here. Peyton Stern with sincere appreciation for your leadership and contribution serving the SWIM School Board, 2018 through 2020.
Yeah.
That's very cool. Thanks for doing that.
Yeah, thank you.
Very nice. Very nice.
Yes, thank you.
So again, with that said,
That's all I have. Does anybody have questions for me?
I just had that one follow-up on school meals and how that's going. Are we doing anything on the summer?
The answer to that question is, the Boys and Girls Club are, it's after June 19th, the Boys and Girls Club are going into summer food service mode. So the school district is not. Now, I, I don't know if there's a little bit of collaboration with, I have it on my list to call, I was gonna call Mary Budke about a couple of other things and I did not get to it today. I will tomorrow. I don't know if there's going to be some collaboration with Sedexo or not, but at this point in time, the school district is done on the 19th. And then you all asked, are we getting paid? I beg your pardon?
I was just wondering about the cost this year because we've been feeding kids for free all over the district all summer long. And I just wanted for all spring.
And we're getting reimbursed. We're getting reimbursed from the USDA, same as we would. In fact, it's actually an expanded deal. But there's, there's two answers to that question. One is we're not serving as many meals as we would have if we were in session. So our food service, since we're, we're not going to be getting as much money, we, we're not going to owe Sedexo as much money. But the meals we are serving, we're being reimbursed for.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, great. If, is there anything else last for the goodie order? If not, then wish everybody a pleasant evening and meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody who attended.
Yeah.